All right. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Conference of Tuesday, February 14th, 2023. We have one item on the agenda, so this is going to be pretty easy. Discussion regarding the FYE 2024 Capital Improvements Program Budget and FYE 2025 through 2028 Capital Improvements Plan. Take it away.
Thank you.
Oh, here's Anthony.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kim Kaufman, Budget Manager. This is Jacob Huckabee. He's Budget Technician with a focus on capital projects. And as the mayor said, we're here to discuss the Capital Improvements Program for the current year, for next fiscal year, and then the Capital Improvements Plan for fiscal years ending 2025 through 2028. And this presentation was a collaborative effort with all of the project managers, many of which are here to answer any questions you might have tonight. So we'll look at the calendar first for the preparation of next year's Capital Improvements Program. We had a meeting on November 15th, and we went over an update on funded projects and discussed your priorities for next fiscal year. Tonight, we're going to discuss proposed new projects and midpoint evaluations. And then we'll meet again on May 2nd to review the final proposed plan for fiscal year ending 2024. The purpose of the Capital Improvements Program is to support services of municipal government. Projects are identified in long-range master plans that are reviewed by citizens and adopted by council. Priorities are set by council, and the short-range needs go into a one-year adopted capital budget, and the long-range needs go into a five-year capital plan with proposed schedules of implementation and available funding sources. The CIP plans and budgets are adopted annually, but only the one-year budget appropriates funds. Emergencies and high-priority, unanticipated project needs can be added through reallocation or appropriation of funds by council. Sources of funding include enterprise revenues, voter-approved general obligation bond proceeds, the capital sales tax, the Norman Ford sales tax, public safety sales tax, U and P TIF revenues, intergovernmental grants, room tax, private funds, and others. A capital project generally costs more than $100,000. It's relatively fixed or permanent in nature. It has an expected life of more than five years, usually consists of the construction of a new, expanded, or improved tangible asset. It often takes more than one fiscal year to complete, and contracted services for design, land acquisition, and utility relocations may be required in advance of construction. And this is contrasted with capital outlay, which are expenses for maintaining or purchasing new or replacing tangible assets, which have an expected life of only one to five years. It's a one-time occurrence, and expenses usually occur within a single fiscal year, and this would be vehicles, furniture, computers, and equipment. Capital outlay paid by the capital fund are expended from the General Fund and Westwood Fund with capital sales tax funds transferred to those funds to cover those costs. These are the funds in the Capital Improvements Program Budget. I won't go over every single fund. A lot of this information is a repeat, but it's good information to have as you consider your projects. And then the enterprise funds are also included in the Capital Improvements Program Budget. The Capital Improvements Fund was established in 1976 to account for capital projects funded by the capital sales tax receipts, general obligation bond issues, or specific matching funds, private and reimbursement funds. The project supports services that do not have dedicated special revenues like the enterprise funds do, and those projects relating to enterprise funds that are funded with fees and charges or special revenue sources are accounted for in their respective enterprise fund. So how is the capital fund funded? Seventy percent of 1% of sales tax was set aside for capital improvements by referendum in September of 1976, and those projects approved for construction with this funding are accounted for in the Capital Improvements Fund. So these are the guidelines to allocate new sales tax revenue. These are guidelines only, but 36% goes to other projects in debt service, 5% goes to maintenance of existing facilities, 7% is for general contingency, 27% goes to capital outlay, and about 25% goes to street maintenance. And the status of the capital fund right now, for next fiscal year, we're looking at a negative $3 million for new capital projects. Fiscal year ending 2025, we're looking at about a negative $1.2 million. These negative figures are mainly due to reserves for debt service. And then in fiscal year ending 2026, we're looking at about $6 million for new capital That's the end of the general overview of the Capital Improvements Program, so I'm going to hand it over to Jacob to go over project status update.
All right. So to start, some of the projects have been closed out this fiscal year. We have a sidewalk project along Flood Avenue. We have the Imhoff Road Bridge Emergency Repair Project, the Creston Way and Schultz Drainage Project, the Merkel Creek Stabilization Project, the Porter Avenue and Acres Street Intersection, that was the 2019 Bond Project, and the city's emergency communication system, which is one of the PSST critical capital needs. Some projects that are underway this fiscal year, we have the TMDL Compliance and Monitoring Plan, this is year seven, the Lake Thunderbird TMDL Data Analysis and Plan Update, the Lower Imhoff Channel Stabilization Phase One, Fire Station 9 wrapping up, the Engineering Design Criteria Update, and the Green Stormwater Infrastructure Review, the Traffic Management Center, the Vehicle Wash Facility at North Base, the Downtown Transit Center, 80 new bus stops, James Garner Phase Two from Acres to Flood, the Porter Avenue Streetscape 2019 Bond Project, 12th Avenue Northeast and High Meadows Intersection Project, the East Alameda Street Bond Project, the Constitution Street Multimodal Path, Historical Museum Roof Replacements, and the Andrews Park Accessible Playground Project. Some more projects that are under construction this year, we have the Municipal Complex Renovation with the Development Center wrapping up. They're getting started on the Building A demolition, Carson Boulevard sidewalks, the Gray Street Two-Way Conversion Project with a bid opening this spring, James Garner Phase Two Acres to Flood, the Porter Avenue Streetscape Project, the Downtown Transit Center, Jenkins Avenue Bond Project, the James Garner Phase Three Duffy to Acres, the Traffic Management Center, and the Flood Street Multimodal Path Project. And what you see here are some examples of the projects in the 2021 Street Maintenance Bond Program. We have the Preventive Maintenance, the Urban Reconstruction, and the Urban Concrete Projects. And then we also have the Urban Asphalt and the Rural Asphalt Projects in that same And then this slide is an overview of the program as a whole. The first year, FYE 22 is fully complete, and then in FYE 23, the Urban Asphalt, Urban Concrete, and Rural Road Rehabilitation Programs are all under construction. The Urban Road Reconstruction is in the bidding process, and Preventive Maintenance is complete for this fiscal year. This is an overview of the 2012 Transportation and Stormwater Bond Program. All of these projects have been complete except for the last two. We have the Alameda Street Project, which is currently underway, and then we have the upcoming 36th Avenue Northwest Widening Project, which is still pending federal transportation grant funding. Overall, throughout the life of this program, staff has been able to secure over $41 million in federal funds to help get these projects going. And then, let's see. We'll move on to the detail on the East Alameda Project. So this one is actually funded without federal funds. We used the 2012 Bond Funds along with the 2016 Street Maintenance Fund, Surplus Funds, and the 2021 Street Maintenance Funds that were able to be used on that. Construction began in April 2022, and is looking to complete in May of 2023. And then next, we have the 36th Avenue Northwest Project. This is going to widen two miles of road from Tecumseh up to Indian Hills, construction budget of $17.8 million. Again, this is pending due to a delay in some federal funds. We've recently applied for the RAISE Fed Grant in 2021 and 2022, and have applied for an ACOG grant every year since 2016. So we've had some questions whenever the proposal for the Access Oklahoma Turnpike came up on how this might affect some of the bond projects that we have. So with the 36th Avenue Northwest Project, it's going to potentially reduce the boundaries of this project south of Indian Hills Road with an estimated cost reduction of $4.9 million, bringing the total construction cost on this project to around $12.8 million. And again, it's still on hold until we secure those additional funds, and we're also looking into the possibility of going through with the bond election to get the funds, or if we can secure the federal funds. Whenever we get those, we'll be ready to get this one underway.
Counselor, whichever one was first.
Well, my question is about, okay, so if we're hanging out, waiting, getting this and going, and I know that we're waiting on turnpike maybe, how that alters this, right? But what if we magically get the funding, we go ahead, does, when that, do we get compensated like everybody else if they tear up the roads and stuff like that?
That's a good question, Justice. I would think you would want to hold off and build that portion south of the turnpike first, and then hold off until we know more about the turnpike status itself. It would be a waste of dollars.
But how long do we hold off? Because who knows how, that's what I'm saying, what's the balance of holding off so we can be prudent in wait, and then in not getting done? And who knows? Who knows whatever happens to that turnpike? And we don't know at this point. I mean, I'm pretty confident which way it might end up going, but you never know.
It's on hold right now, is all I know.
We do know this, that the east-west turnpike proposal is a top priority in their 15-year program, so we think we're going to learn about that one sooner. North-south is, you know, maybe 10 years out of that, upon that category, I've known it for a while.
Okay, but what if, because we do get the federal funds, and we just say, hey, it's now or never, they say, take it or go? I mean, because it's, it'd be funding coming, who takes care of that once it's spent? Because you're compensated for your house and your land and property. Who's compensated? Do we get compensated if they do condemn it?
You know, the irony of that is those federal funds would be channeled through the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, which is also part of the turnpike. I think they would help us answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
So, local bond election for this project only, is that assuming that we continue to not get approved for federal funding for this project? Is that what?
That would be, yes.
Because they already were once, didn't, wasn't that?
We're just throwing that out there for your consideration, not as early as a decision, but we've tried for seven years, and we keep coming up empty. At some point, we're going to have to either build the project or throw it on the shelf. We think another bond election for the remainder would be something council might consider. I don't know if that would go by itself, or if that would be part of a larger bond election proposition, but that would be one way to close the delta on the money.
So using the 2012 bond approval, and then an additional bond to close the gap?
Just use all bond funds to do the project in two different bond issues.
Okay, so the first voter-approved bond, that would still be getting used?
Yes.
It's just that that is not enough to cover this total cost?
That's correct.
Which we had always anticipated, like 80, 80, 20, 70, 30?
30, 30-ish, somewhere in that range. We spent most of those dollars on the pre-construction, engineering, land acquisition, utilities, environmental assessment, so we've done everything we were set out to do minus the 20% of construction.
And would you just mention about, in 2012, when that package of projects was put forward, those types of projects scored much more favorably for federal funding, and today they do not? Hardly at all, apparently?
The scoring formula's changed in 2020, a year after the 2019 Bond Program was voted on, so that has changed everything for us in terms of how projects qualify or not. We're still doing pretty well, but the things that are favored today differently than before are multimodal improvements, bike lanes, sidewalks, things of that nature. Before, it was all about readiness points, are you ready to build the project, and do you have your local money? And we always were.
And we were the best at that, yeah.
We were really good at that. Readiness isn't even a factor anymore.
And a lot of other cities in the metro weren't applying for projects, if I recall, and Norman, we had, for years, been extremely aggressive, and other cities started saying, well, we can't let Norman take all the money anymore, we've got to do, step up, and that's what we've seen. But even, as mentioned, staff started applying for funding for this project in 2016, and it's been denied every single year since then, so.
And some of that is through competition, some of that are parts of the project that just don't quite gain the point, the points we need to win the grant, not for lack of trying.
And that makes us changed over the years, too, hasn't it?
Yes.
The grant points, yeah.
Can't we just throw in a sidewalk? I mean, or a bike lane? Like, Bob Supes might want to be riding, I don't know.
Yeah, we're all in there, they're all lit.
Just whatever we can just throw in there?
The lower-density suburban widening projects that are not favorable anymore. So like, widening Jenkins, an urban area project near campus, got a lot, it got very favorable. And yet Cedar Lane and 36th Avenue East is not getting favorable, I guess returns on that. Any widening on the edge of town that we have is not, not scoring favorable anymore.
But try running on those sectioned line roads.
Those are very expensive ones.
Sean, same question, but different factors. What if we have a bond approved, and we have a bond issued, and we have a road that we're working on, and then they do the turnpike? How, does that affect the turnpike's ability, or the OTA's ability, if they're coming across something that has a bond issued on it?
Great, again, lots of questions, we don't know the answers to, Counselor. I think, I hope, that the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority will collaborate with us on all of our, whether it's our comprehensive transportation planning processes pending up, or immediate road projects, which we know we have two bridges that are in our, in our programs to be replaced, but they're really going to be impacted by the turnpike. So there's lots of collaborative issues we're going to have to resolve, and.
Well, I would just say that that is something that I would like legal to look at, that if we have a voter-approved bond issue, and we have bonds issued, and then we have construction undergoing, underway, would that put a damper on the OTA being able to come through with eminent domain and complete that turnpike?
If this relates to bond money, the only factor would be getting fairly compensated for the value of the bond that had been spent, it's very similar to eminent domain. And what we could then use, the proceeds of whatever they paid us for their property, would be for any other related project. So we could just do another project, why even a road?
Okay, so the bonds are kind of fluid, but if it was to that specific bond, they would just pay off that bond, or whatever part that they? Okay, that's what I'm getting at. I'm just looking at angles that voters might want to know about constituents, if there was something that the city could do.
Counselor, Peacock, did you still have a question?
I was going to ask Mr. Leary to make the same clarification, as Holman asked, but I will go ahead and say that I hear this a lot, being the 36s in Ward Eight, I hear a lot when we bring up other votes on other potential bond issues, that, you know, why, why do we want to vote in support of this future bond issue when we can't even get the 2012 36th widening project completed? So I know that going back to the voters to ask for more money in a secondary bond for this project will be contentious, let's put it that way.
But such is life. Yes, sir.
I would just add, too, that it is a voter-approved project, and I absolutely think we have an obligation to figure out some way to get it done.
Just coming up with that.
Whether it's due to come to Franklin first, and then figure out, based on the uncertainty of the turnpike, we do that other leg later, I don't know, but, but I agree, too, it would probably be a pretty tough sell. I think it's explainable, but, you know, it's 11 years.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
So this slide is just an overview of some of the 2019 transportation bond programs, the projects that are in this program, a few of the earlier ones. So far, the Porter Avenue and Acres Project is complete. We've also locked in funding for four of the other projects in here. We have the Porter Avenue Streetscape, the Jenkins Avenue Project, the Gray Street Two-Way Conversion Project, and the Traffic Management Center Project. And then any of the excess funds in these projects will just go to the other 2019 projects to get them completed as well. Some more detail on the Porter Avenue Streetscape Project, it is funded by the 2019 GO Bonds. It's going to add decorative lighting, ADA improvements, new bus stops, place making gateways, and landscaping, all the way down to Alameda up to Robinson Street. This is going to have an estimated cost of $5.7 million, and so far, we have acquired $2.8 million in federal funding to help get this project going. Next, we have, this is a Norman Ford Project, but still kind of relates to one of the 2019 projects, James Garner Phase Two. This is from Acres to Flood. Again, this is funded through Norman Ford Funds. It's going to add decorative lighting, a new bridge over Robinson Street, and limited-access express route to downtown. It's going to have an estimated cost of $9.5 million. Construction's looking to begin in spring of 2023, with a completion date of around spring of 2024, and so far, $4.8 million of federal funds have been acquired to help with this project. And so kind of tying into that one is this 2019 James Garner Phase Three Project, which is from Duffy to Acres. It's going to be reconstructing roadway and parking along James Garner. It's going to add a signalized intersection at Main Street, improve railroad crossing, and it's going to begin construction in fall of 2023, with a completion date around fall of 2024, with a total estimated cost of $6.7 million. Now we have the Gray Street Two-Way Conversion Project. This is going to convert Gray Street to two-way traffic, and add pedestrian ADA improvements, a signalized intersection at James Garner. It's going to enhance the railroad crossing, and they're looking to begin construction summer of 2023, with a estimated date of around, completion around spring of 2024. The total estimated cost is around $5.4 million, and so far, $1.7 million have been awarded to this project in federal funds, and most recently, an extra $500,000 on top of that from the coronavirus relief and recovery, I think that's called.
Counselor.
Sean, I'm looking at the dates on both of the last two projects being simultaneous. How is that going to be communicated to our residents? How is the staging going to work?
Great question, Justice. Lots of that, we were sharing with the Chamber Aviation Transportation Committee earlier today, lots of activity in downtown Norman, so if you just look at that map right there, Porter's under construction, starting in three, four weeks. Beginning of April. James Garner starts in?
March 6.
March 6. Gray Two-A, we think, is around the summer of '23, so after those two are well into their construction, we're going to kick in one of the Gray Street projects. If I may go back to the previous, the, this information's coming in pretty fresh, but we did apply for federal funding on James Garner Phase Three. We learned last week we did not get that grant, but that project was fully funded in your bond program, so that one's also going under construction, probably fall of this year as a city-only project. So you will have four major corridor projects in downtown Norman under construction at the same time, so we're thinking a lot about your question. We're certainly not ignoring that, we're keenly aware of it, but it's going to be tricky. Each one will affect different areas. For instance, James Garner Phase Two really has minimal effect on any businesses, homes, it's really kind of on its own, still affect traffic on Robinson, or building a bridge, and on Flood. But that one is probably the least impacting in the neighborhoods and businesses, the other three, not so much. So, more to come. We've got plans in place, we're talking to every business on Gray Street right now to make sure we understand all their needs. We'll be doing the same thing on James Garner, we've already done that on Porter, but yes, it's going to be messy and unpleasant for about a year or so, but it's going to be wonderful when we're done.
But perhaps more public money invested in downtown than any point in history. It's a big giant deal, and you don't necessarily plan to line them all up about the same time, but you never know where the dollars come from, and, you know, just how the design work lines up, and how that lines up with sewer projects and everything else. So we will survive this next 12 months of construction, and it will be a brand-new place by the time we wrap this up. Circulation will be different, greatly improved.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking about, I mean, I understand that these are all very different projects in Lindsay Street, but just thinking about the impact on, yes, our businesses, our residents, and a lot of times, we get notice of like, a week or maybe a few days about road projects. I'm thinking that this is going to need a lot more forecasting ahead, because people, I mean, already, you see the Main Street stuff, and people are already like, what the heck? We found out about that at the end of last week, so.
On positive note, none of these roads will be closed. They will be partially under construction and closed here and there, unlike Lindsay Street. Again, Lindsay Street was, kind of got a bad rap, and we're a little sensitive to that, but the impact on Lindsay Street was the closure of the bridge at I-35 by ODOT. That had nothing to do with the city's project. None of that's happening here. All these roads will remain open, all the businesses will remain open, driveways, you know, impacted here and there. It's tricky.
Yeah.
I appreciate your question, but yes, these are the kind of projects we've learned, if you take the Main Street Streetscape Project a few years ago, we worked day-to-day, door-to-door with these folks, and that's the only thing that works. You have to know where they're at, what they're, what's coming up, what's important to them, and each of them are different. That will have to happen on Porter, definitely have to happen on Gray, and that, we're prepared to do that.
I mean, I'm excited about all the projects, I think they're really exciting, but.
It's a lot, and I don't know that we planned it quite as compact as it's turning out.
Thank you.
Were you before, Councilmember Grant, or afterwards?
I should, just as a brief editorial comment, not to get in the weeds too much, but while we're on the subject, I just want to reiterate my support for a two-way Main Street conversion, whenever the time comes back.
Here, here. If I may just mention that these are so important to that question, because we really need to see what James Garner is going to act like, we really need to see how Gray goes. We think it's going to go great, but we'll know in about a year or two whether we're ready for that one.
Thank you. With reverse angle parking, I love it.
Twist it around.
We're here for it.
I also have a question from Mr. Leary around that. So do you foresee, like, having alternate routes and alternate parking? Like, how much parking is going to be affected by these? Like, I know Gray Street has some on-street parking.
Yeah, that's probably a good example to start with, Counselor. I think the Gray Street will be impacted sort of block by block. We'll know more here pretty soon when the project is bid, and we know, we have a contractor here, so that's really the next step, is to really find out who's going to be building the project, and what their plan is for sequencing. And again, just like we did on Main Street, we'll work with each block at a time to know what they need to accommodate their parking, or access to their front door, that sort of thing. Each block will be different, each business will be different.
Well, this is like a calendar year's worth of stuff, so I'd just like to remind you, there's Norman Music Festival, there's every second Friday.
There's the parade, there's every festival, anything that you can think of. So yes, it's going to be tricky, but that's why we invest so much in our staff, in our construction managers, in our design. These project plans have sequencing built in, the contractor has to do it this way on this day, in this month, and so on, so they don't just go out and have their way with it, we manage them.
So you could foresee maybe working with some of our events and businesses for maybe some transportation options? Like, I could see buses, or even those scooters being kind of a workaround to getting into the heart of downtown.
Put this in the first go-round for these kind of big projects. When we did Lindsay Street, it was awful, but we worked hard, and we got it done, and it was his predecessor, spent there every day, at least I got 15 minutes worth of chewing out per day, we're goofing something.
Whether you liked it or not.
Whether I liked it or not, and it was good for me, so, anyway.
The building's going to be, it's over 15-foot-deep trash hole right down the middle of the street, that's not happening.
Yeah.
Drive a truck through it, remember?
We can do it. Anyway, we better get back to work.
All right, so again, some questions that come up on how the proposal for the turnpike might affect some of the 2019 bond program, program projects. So on the Indian Hills Road, 48th to I-35, that portion will be potentially reconstructed by the OTA at no cost to the city, saving around $8.4 million. And the Indian Hills and I-35 interchange, the matching funds would not be required, so that would save the city an additional $10, $2 million for a total of around $10.4 million of potential savings in this 2019 bond program. million of potential savings in this 2019 bond program based on the proposal. So next, we have the ODOT projects on Highway Nine, creating Highway Nine as a, excuse me, a four-lane, rural, undivided rural section, sorry, all the way through Norman City limits. So far, the first four phases have been completed on this project, with Phases Five and Six from 100 to the city limits. We've also added in where the turnpike could potentially intersect with Highway Nine in this project. Phase Five is looking to begin in somewhere around 2025. So now, we have a timeline of Norman's Surface Transportation and Surface Transportation Block grant funding. In fiscal year '23, we secured $2.9 million. In fiscal year '24, we secured $8.6 million. And then, in fiscal year '25, we're anticipating, we've secured $1.4 million in this program. Next, we have the City's Vehicle Replacement Program. In fiscal year '23, we replaced 16 units in our fleet for a cost of $2.1 million. As you compare from year to year, those are going to vary just based on vehicle prices, with bigger ones being more expensive. It's also important to note that in 2013, there was a fleet study done that recommended about $6.4 million in annual fleet replacements back in 2013. So that's continuing to be a challenge for the city going forward to get their fleet So these are some capital projects that are recurring sidewalk projects in fiscal year ending '24. We have the sidewalk program for schools and arterials for $80,000, the sidewalk accessibility project for $30,000, the citywide sidewalk project for $100,000, the downtown area sidewalk project for $50,000, sidewalks and trails projects for $120,000, and the horizontal saw cut program for $40,000, all totaling $420,000.
Jacob, the sidewalk project on Constitution, on the north side of the street that runs in front of Jimmy Austin Golf Course, was that, was that a sidewalk project? Was that part of the Norman Forward?
It's an ODOT grant. They call it the Transportation Alternatives Program for bike trails. And it's also partial by Norman Forward Funds.
In front of Reeves Park. Reeves Park, got it. Thank you.
And 2019 bond project, I don't know if we were going to do a path, I think anyway, on one side of the street with the 2019 bond project.
Yes, Constitution, the road project in the 2019 bond program was sidewalk on the south side.
South. So that project will redo the sidewalk on the south side. Cool.
All right, so this is just a list of some of the proposed recurring projects that we have, the funding for FYE '24. As you can see, all these are going to total to about $12.4 million, and these are all projects that we do every single year, and we just request recurring funding on these. These are some upcoming significant projects in FYE '24. We have State Highway Nine Multimodal from 48th to 60th. It's submitted for Transportation Alternatives Grant with a $220,000 local match with that project. State Highway Nine Multimodal from 60th to 72nd, also submitted the same grant program with a $307,000 local match. The Alameda Road Diet Project was awarded the grant, same TA grant, $233,000 with a $57,000 local match. The Lindsay Street Sidewalks from 12th to 24th was also awarded the TA with $727,000 and $145,000 in the local match. And the Gray Street Two Way Bond Project was awarded the CRRSAA project funds of $500,000 as well. Now, we just have the plant updates that were a little bit more important once the OTA announced their proposals and how those would affect Norman. Currently, they're in the scoping process and working with the consultants to try and figure out how those budgets are going to look with each plan. They should have some more updates in March on this, but everything is moving along on these as we speak. And now, we're on to the Norman Forward projects, projects that are currently underway. We have the big one, the Young Family Athletic Center. This is a $41 million project. It's fully funded with $22.5 million from Norman Forward, $3.8 million from the Hotel Motel Tax Bond, various Norman Forward transfers totaling $2.7 million, the Trey Young Family Foundation donation of $4 million. Norman Regional is giving around $7 million for their portion, the In Motion Performance Clinic, and the University North Park Fund contribution of $2.7 million. And they're looking to be substantially complete on this project in October of 2023. Next, we have the Senior Wellness Center. This is a $14 million project with $8.5 million of that coming from Norman Forward, $3.9 million coming from the CARES Act, $426,000 coming from the Norman Regional Hospital System Land Swap, and 18 North Porter, that property potentially selling, adding $1.2 million. And in the meantime, while it's still waiting, that was covered with general fund money. The completion on the Senior Wellness Center is expected to be around August of 2023. Next, we have the Reeves Park Project. This was a $10 million project with $9 million coming from Norman Forward, the actual Reeves Park Project, and then $1 million coming from the Community Sports Parks Projects. This is Phase One of the overall Reeves Master Plan, and they're looking to complete this in early spring of 2023. Next, we have the Griffin Park Project. This is a $14 million project, all coming from Norman Forward. This is broken up into six phases, with Phases One through Five being complete and Phase Six currently underway, and it's looking to complete in summer of 2023. Some of the projects from Norman Forward that have been completed this year are Ruby Grant Phase One A with the youth football practice fields, restroom, and parking lot addition, the Rotary and Vineyard Park renovations, and if the weather permits in the next 30 days, the Cherry Creek Park renovation. And this is just a list of some of the future Norman Forward projects that are going to come up, and some of them are already started.
It looks like by the end of this year, all the major projects in Norman Forward will be finished. And we'll be talking about, you know, the neighborhood parks and other things, but all the big stuff will be done. It looks like if, there's no delays or anything, but I think that's pretty good. It's year eight of a 15-year tax.
It will be halfway into the life of the tax in July, and we plan to keep our citizens for actual, say, more pay as a bit of a presentation out there.
Something we can sell to the public. Getting it done faster than I think was even anticipated, actually.
All right, so on to the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund. The projects that are underway, we have the Emergency Communications and Operations Center. This has a budget of $17.1 million. $9.5 million of that came from the ARPA funds, and $7.8 million came from the PSSC fund. Recently, with some of the bids, there was a little bit of an overrun, going over budget around $760,000, I think. The current plan is to present to council using some leftover ARPA funds to bring that up to budget. There's also a couple of options with general fund balance. This is a...
That's on tonight's agenda.
Yes. The completion on this is expected in summer of 2024 as well.
So this is coming from what unspent ARPA money? Like, what bucket is that coming from?
Most of it is coming from unspent vaccination incentive funds. Some of it is coming from affordable housing that was originally appropriate for the place of 1201 West Robin.
Why is, why are we just hearing about this right now? Like, that's, that's money that could be, have been spent on affordable housing in other capacities.
But it was certainly discussed in the council, and members discussed, you know, the overrun was discussed in the finance committee.
And what did the finance committee say?
Remember that the total appropriation for affordable housing is $6.4 million, and this is $160,000.
Yes, sir.
So when this was put forward in the PSST Part Two, I recall the budget being $6 million. Do we have any, I don't know, reasons we can think of, explanations for why it has exploded in costs so exponentially since then? Or were we just off by that much in 2014 when we put that forward?
Well, what we've seen, not just Norman projects, but you know what OU's been experiencing in cost increases, and even what Norman Regional experienced, the cost of every component of all the projects has gone up. Steel and concrete and various roofing materials, mechanical systems have doubled in price over the last 16 months. And what we kind of anticipate is prices will plateau and hopefully stay there for a while. We don't really anticipate them coming back down to what the old normal used to be, but it's, and it's not unique to Oklahoma either. We still haven't experienced what that impact may be when the federal 1.2 to 1.4 trillion infrastructure package happens, when those dollars hit the streets. But there will be a greater demand on materials and, you know, architects, engineers, and contractors, so we really don't see any relief in the near future.
But you are right. I think it was under scoped or, you know, priced when it was done initially, too. And then, the increase, almost doubling a lot of our cost, really caused it to...
And it being a project, we couldn't just, that was always the debate, was we can't just build like part of this, we need to build the whole thing.
Yeah.
The way it needs to be done, not kind of halfway.
Yeah.
Based on the type of place that it is. It's kind of a complicated deal.
The budget was, has been known for years. You recall that, that in 2020, August of 2020, there was a proposal on the general obligation bond issue to fund it that way, to fund the gap that way. There was a feeling. So along came the RPA, and this was certainly an eligible expense, and that was able to close the gap.
Councilmember.
So I was happy to close the gap with ARPA money. It run us over, I don't like it taking from other buckets. Is this something that seizure funds could pay for? Capital, we talked about capital projects, we have a lot of money, we needed, is that something that we could take from there instead?
Yes, probably is.
Because it's an EOC?
Because it's an EOC, it's a communications center.
Yeah.
For public safety.
Maybe something to consider.
It's on our agenda, too.
We've got about 10 minutes, maybe 15 at the very most. Will you be able to get it done, or do we need to...
We should be able to finish.
There's only a few slides left.
Yep.
Not to rush you.
All right, so now, we have the apparatus replacement in the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund in FYE '23. They're anticipating spending most of the $800,000 on the engine and the staff vehicle. And in FYE '24, they're requesting a budget for $2.1 million for a new ladder unit. And when this was originally voted on, they were given $6.8 million for this program. And with everything being spent in FYE '23, we're looking at only having about $1 million left in that program. And so if they want to get the full $2.1 million for that ladder, they'll have to find funding from elsewhere to get that up to where the budget is needed. This slide is just discussing some of the potential Geo bond referendums that we could be discussing going forward. We've had multiple sessions on the need for the bridge maintenance and repair bond. We talked a little bit today about the possibility of 36th Avenue Northwest and the possibility of Norman Forward Two coming up, to be seen. So just discussing those and some possible timing on when those might need to be started. And this, this last slide here, this is some of the upcoming challenges that we're going to face throughout the fiscal year. As you can see, we have the I-35 Corridor Study. We have the Access Oklahoma Turnpike Plan and the effects that that has on the city, public transportation, and the purchasing and zoning of the land for the various stations, new traffic signals on state highways and city arterials. We discussed the fleet replacement, IT infrastructure, and Microsoft system upgrades. They're estimating around $3 million to get that done. The bridge replacements and major maintenance, stormwater infrastructure, the renovations and upgrades needed for the fleet fueling facility, sidewalk gaps throughout town, the escalating construction costs that have affected some of the projects recently, the multiple master plan updates, the Traffic Management Center staffing, the fleet facility and its renovation, the Griffin Hospital, land purchase and possible redevelopment, and the possibility of a new arena in the UNP with OU going into the SEC next year. And that's it for today. The next steps are going to be on May 2nd. We're going to review the final proposed capital budget for FYE '24 and the CIP plan for fiscal years '25 through '28.
Two Councilmember Foreman's thoughts on that EOC gap closure. Yes, action item tonight. In order for us to award the contract, we have to be able to demonstrate that, yep, we have all the dollars. Should council decide into construction, we'd like to fund part of that a different way. That's perfectly fine, and you can make that change anytime before Mr. Francisco cuts loose with the final check.
Or you could do a bond amendment tonight. It's just, you know, we have to flatter contract.
What would you like to do, madam?
Robert's Rules lady.
If you want to amend it tonight, you just need to pull it from the consent docket and then amend it to change the funding source.
Thoughts?
I personally have heartburn with amending things.
I know, on the dais.
Can we put it back into a study session and go?
Yeah, we have to postpone.
Go that.
So you just, we'll pull it off consent, and then you can postpone it to the 28th, and we can add it to...
If we do that, we will...
We might have to rebid it.
Because of this timeline on the bidding process.
We recommend, in order to not rebid and expose ourselves to more cost increases, if you went forward tonight, and we could still bring it back for you guys to reconsider that last funding gap on the 20th. Absolutely. So we just need to... Be good with that? Say the funding's there to award that contract.
Do we have three right here that we'll put it on?
Yes, but I guess my question is about, so you said that this was looked at finance?
The overrun was looked at in finance.
Was that last month?
No, it was two months ago, three months ago.
Does anybody remember that from finance, two months ago?
Where we closed the gap fund, fund, this kind of thing.
So we knew about the gap, we just didn't know about which, which funds we were going to use. So that was not, I guess, council did not get to weigh in to this point on which, which source.
Until the guaranteed macro price had been identified.
We didn't know about the gap until the bid was done.
Sure. Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, like, when it was decided, the ARPA money was going to be the, the funding mechanism to fill the gap. That's really what I'm trying to understand. That's what I'm trying to understand. Which was?
Roughly $700,000.
Not when?
A few days ago.
Okay, okay.
Little last week, it was converted.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess my point is just that I wish that we would have had some time to do that, but I understand there's moving parts and we bidding and all that kind of stuff, but you know how much, how much conversation we've had about the buckets of where we're spending ARPA money and where we're not? Like, I think the piece that we're not spending on vaccine initiatives, like, I'm okay with that. I think we've moved past... I think we've moved past some of, some of that. But it's just that piece for affordable housing, because we know how much need there is in the community. And so I don't, I feel like every dollar that we can push into that really matters. So I guess what I'm trying to understand is, if we go forward tonight, then we can add to a future agenda to change the funding mechanism?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We just have to award the contract essentially. Correct.
To make sure that we secure the bid at current price. Okay. Yeah, I don't want to have to rebid, that would be a nightmare.
That's good sense.
So, on the same page, just needed to understand.
Just real quick on that fire apparatus replacement schedule. It looks like the budget compared to actual, all of those that we've done so far came in under budget. Is that accurate?
Pretty much, yeah.
But there's still like a, was this, this new ladder truck, was that not, not anticipated? Or was the cost not anticipated, I guess?
He kind of, the chief kind of updates that plan every year as his needs change. And so what he recently has been discussing for fiscal year 24 is this aerial platform ladder. And that cost is 2.1 million, which pushes him over the 6.8 allotted. So we just need to discuss where the rest of those funds are going to come from, or if he uses P S S T funds for that.
The million or so dollars we have remaining in there, is that, is that mostly from the savings from those other?
That's just part of the 6.8 that was allotted for that fire apparatus program in the critical capital needs discussion.
So perhaps, and I don't know if we've looked at it this way, Mr. Francisco, with sales tax revenue continuing to perform at projected levels, which is probably higher than what was originally anticipated when that apparatus replacement dollar amount was set, there may be more money in the P S S T program than what was originally thought possible.
If we got increased sales tax, there should be more.
Just reminding council, we still are short of the mandated personnel at the public safety sales tax program. It would be the higher requirement.
Good to see these vehicles and everything came in under budget, that's pretty good though.
Yeah.
Good job.
Coming for more sidewalks.
Bring it on. Make it flat, don't look back. All right, well, good. We're adjourned from here, we'll reconvene.
There, here we go. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of February 14th, 2023. Madam Clerk, will you call a roll?
Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Lynn?
Here.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Tortorello?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Heikala?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
All right. Will you join me now in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, item one, consideration of approval of the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority minutes of November 22nd, 2022. I need a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, I'm going to move down to the other podium. Item two, recognition of participants of the Norman Chamber of Commerce tomorrow's Leaders Program. As I read the names of the participants of the tomorrow's Leaders Program, if you are present tonight, please come forward and join me down here in the front. Braden Card, Kat Connolly, Cecily Covey, Reese Crandall, Owen Eschelman, Anya Fisher, Ally Garn, Carte Carter Hammer, Carson Hawk, Ryan Hopper, Matthew Hutchison, Will Hyde, Avery Young, Carly Coop, Jamie Caranda, Tase Lodgson, Will Lindquist, Luke Martin, Corey McKay, Kane Meyer, Ally Meyer, Ava Millarino, Ricky Parker, Marley Rogers, Finley Sayers, Ella Tally, Ella Teicher, Evan Vineyard, Owen Voto, Jesse Wong, and Jamison Wu. This is wonderful. You guys have done an absolutely wonderful job and I commend you for what you're doing. It, there are going to be some pictures and stuff. If you'll stand with me for just a second and we'll get whatever Erica wants, this picture's getting taken.
Can you get them all in one shot, Erica?
Then we go, yeah. Thank you all. If you'd like to have a seat and if you'd like to join us, please do. I just... Are you going to run away already? We... They're smarter than we are. All right. A proclamation, this is item three, a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, declaring Friday, February 17th as Random Acts of Kindness Day in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge...
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge the city's proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Hmm? You're, you have what?
Mine's right, mine's right. I mean, I, whatever, two votes.
Okay, hang on, we'll fix that. I don't know why his name's on here twice, but...
Do you want to re-vote it?
No, let me just do a voice call.
There you go.
Oh, your voice vote.
Sheeler?
Yes.
Councilmember Lynn?
Yeah.
Councilmember Grant?
Yeah.
Councilmember Tortorello?
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Aye.
Mayor Heikala?
Yes.
The vote passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let me read this to you. It is a proclamation of the City Council of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, declaring Friday, February 8th, uh, excuse me, 17th, 2023, as Random Acts of Kindness Day in the city of Norman. Whereas Random Acts of Kindness Day is recognized on February 17th as an annual tradition of performing acts of kindness and whereas millions of Americans form, focus together to change the world, one random act of kindness at a time, and whereas people of any age can participate in random acts of kindness at any time, any place, and for the unselfish purpose of spreading goodwill, and whereas the city of Norman recognizes the value of simple acts of kindness, performed without prompting a reason, and how these acts can positively impact the performer, the recipient, and the onlooker of the good deed, and whereas Random Acts of Kindness Day will inspire our community to come together to spread joy, hope, and love to friends, family, coworkers, and neighbors, and, excuse me, and whereas Random Acts of Kindness Day possibly impacts lives by extending love and allowing youths to be, youths to be more kind. Now, I therefore, Mayor, city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Friday, February 17th as 2023 as Random Acts of Kindness Day in the city of Norman, Oklahoma, and encourage the residents of our community to join me to recognize and perform random acts of kindness. Mary Ann Scherer, is she here with us?
That's wrong.
Who would you like?
I'll answer.
Please come on.
Mary Ann Lawson.
Lawson?
Yes.
Oh, you got put in there with Andy Scherer, I said.
Please don't do that.
I promise I will not do that. Well...
And do you have Brandon Hopper?
I do not. Mr. Brandon Hopper?
Yep.
Would you like to say something? And, and, and let me present this to you first. And Bryce is behind us to get...
Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Please.
So, three years ago, this time of year, we started Random Acts of Kindness Day with First United Bank, and we started it in one market in Dallas, and it was such a huge success. We got customers involved, our, our employees got involved. We spread it across our entire footprint of 85 locations, and last year we had over 200,000, 300,000 acts of kindness documented across our footprint, and this year we have a goal to do the same thing on Friday, over 300,000 documented acts of kindness. We have our customers involved, and we give out gift cards in the drive-through. I believe our officers, city police officers are going to give out gift cards instead of tickets maybe to some individuals, and that's a great day. But kindness is something that's very easy to do, as simple as opening up a door for somebody, saying hello, smiling. So we'd ask for everybody to get involved and spread kindness as much as we possibly can. So thank you very much. Thanks to the City Council and to the mayor. Appreciate it very much.
www.unitedactsofkindness.org.
Okay, www.unitedactsofkindness.org to document those acts. Thank you very much.
Sorry, Mary Ann.
We married her off to the wrong guy and... Oh. Just to be sure, is Mr. Greg or Dr. Greg Graham here? Thank you, sir. That is your correct name, and you're not married anymore. All right, just making sure. All right. Item number four, a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of February 2023 as Black History Month in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge...
Second. My votes have been cast and the motion passes unanimously.
I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of February 2023 as Black History Month in the city of Norman. Whereas its, its origin in 1926 by the father of black history, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, in his pursuit to raise awareness of African Americans' contributions to civilization, Black History Week began and evolved into Black History Month, and whereas 2023's national theme, Black Resistance: A Journey to Equality, highlights institutions and affiliations' efforts to lobby, litigate, legislate, protest, and has achieved success in areas of equality, and whereas we acknowledge the legacy of black resistance movements throughout the United States and Norman, including movements to rename D-Bar Hall and D-Bar Avenue, to integrate the University of Oklahoma in the famous Cypule versus Board of Regents of the U.S. Supreme Court legal case of 1948, which set legal precedent for more, the more famous 1954 Brown versus Topeka Board of Education case, striking down the separate but equal doctrine and civil protests against police brutality and the incidence of racial discrimination on the OU campus and larger Norman community. And whereas in 2023, Norman, Oklahoma and the United States will observe the 100th birthday celebration of the late Clara Looper, one of the first African American graduates of the University of Oklahoma professional colleges, who led famous sit-down movements and other acts of civil resistance, and whereas the Alliance of Black Employees, the city of Norman Employee Resource Group, established in 2021, also provides support and representation to the black community in Norman, while providing non-black communities an opportunity to learn the black experience and to better understand diverse perspectives, excuse me. And whereas the Norman Human Rights Commission continues to work to dispel prejudice and discrimination and to advance fairness, mutual understanding, and appreciation for the worth of all people. Now, therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2023 as Black History Month in the, in the city of Norman and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating the diversity and character of our community. Dr. Greg Graham, would you please join me at the front place? He, Dr. Graham is a professor in the Clara Looper Department of African, African American Studies at the University of Oklahoma. Would you like to say a word?
Sure.
Give a teach your microphone, right? Let me take this back.
Okay, um, thank you very much for this proclamation, and I would like to encourage all of us present to, as we go about the month of February, engage in activities that commemorate the rich history of African Americans in American life, because African American history, black history, is an important part of not, not only American history, but also of world history, and the recognition of black history is a recognition of our common humanity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And it's now time for council announcements. Councilmember?
Yes, I have a couple announcements. First, I want to recognize the street projects that are going on on Main Street. You may have noticed that they started yesterday, so there will be several sections on Main Street that will be impacted. So just to read out the, on the westbound side of Main, near Foreman Avenue, then West Main, near the State Farm, and then also near Freddie. So there will be several kind of small sections on, there will be some on the eastbound, uh, let's see, near 36th Avenue Northwest, near Sinclair Station, near Thompson Drive, and then near Cruz in the car, car wash. So just wanted to let you know that that's going to be ongoing for about 30 days, depending on weather. So there will be some impacts, but there will be at least one lane open during the duration of these projects. So just in case you didn't know that they were coming, they're here. And then speaking of weather, it's been quite windy today, I'm sure everyone has noticed. In Ward Two, we had a Polycart service pickup today, and so there were lots of trashcans and recycling bins knocked over. So if you have a spare moment, please go check on your trashcans and maybe pick up some of the, the litter that has been kind of dislodged from them as we think about cleaning up and maintaining our stormwater channels and all that kind of stuff. That has a great impact on our creeks and streams. And then finally, today is Election Day, so we have 12 minutes left until the polls close. So hopefully you were able to get out there and vote. If you, Norman citywide had a school bond on the election today, and then the odd wards were up for election, except Councilmember Holman, who was unopposed, and then also a school board race in District Three. So hopefully you were able to get out and looking forward to the results of all of that. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember?
Yes, there is an election, a big one going on. Regardless of what happens on this election tonight, I will say that I could not be more proud, and I will walk away from this place, whether it's in June or two years from the end of June, with my head held high from all the change and impact that we've been able to make in a significant manner in a short amount of time. If I'm so blessed to be up here for two more years, then that's where the good Lord wants me. I look forward to serving the people of Norman in Ward Three. We'll see how this thing shakes out. Here we go.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Happy Black History Month, Happy Voting Day, and Happy Valentine's Day. Speaking of cultural and civic highlights, in Ward Four, this Saturday, February 18th, the Norman Mardi Gras Parade returns to downtown Norman, think lights, costumes, music, and family fun. This year's theme is Phoenix Rising. The parade begins at 7:00 PM, and award ceremony immediately follows at the depot. So bring your friends and family, and while you're downtown, enjoy the Mardi Gras parties and specials at local businesses, too. Also, a big thank you to the volunteers, community members, and sponsors who make this event possible, and as they say, les bons jours, which in other words means the good times roll. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Hey, I want to thank everybody for the last two years myself, and you know, this has been a ride, but it has been an excellent ride. Made a lot of strides forward, made a lot of friends, made a lot of enemies, too, but that's, this is how it plays out, and this is what it means to be sitting up here representing your ward. So no matter what happens tonight, I'm proud to have spent the last year and a half here, sitting in front of you and working on behalf of Ward Five, working on behalf of the city of Norman. It has been a tremendous honor, and I'm looking forward to seeing what the next two years have to hold. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember?
Hello, Valentine's. I don't have any comments tonight, and I'm happy I'm not in an election tonight. Woo, I got to go home and go to sleep early.
Amen. Councilmember?
Well, after three consecutive elections for me, it is somewhat of a relief to have a pass this time, so I'm looking forward to two more years of continuing to do the work to help make Norman a better place. I also want to encourage everybody to tune in or attend the Community Planning and Transportation Committee next Thursday, the fourth Thursday of every month at 4:00 PM, in the study session room next door. It's also broadcast on the City of Norman YouTube channel, but if public transit issues or road construction projects and things like that are of any interest to you, that is the committee where we discuss those issues every month and get updates from city staff, including public transit ridership numbers, budgets, projects that we have underway that we're planning, things like that. So please feel free to attend or watch at home and contact any of us if you have any questions or comments, suggestions, anything that you would like us to cover as a topic on our agenda that you think is a pressing transportation infrastructure issue. So just want to remind everybody about that, next Thursday, the 23rd. And then also want to encourage, encourage everybody to go on the City of Norman's YouTube channel and check out the replay of the meeting we just had that started at 5:30, the City Council Conference. We had a pretty extensive presentation from city staff regarding our capital budget, which includes tons of very important projects that I think many of the residents in Norman will find very interesting and helpful as far as knowing what's coming your way potentially in your neighborhood or on your way to work. So tune into that. And then lastly, I just want to remind everybody that you do have five, six more minutes left to get out and vote, so every single vote can matter in a local election, and I would just remind everybody, the first time I ran, I lost in a runoff by 21 votes, and then I ran two years later and won by 28 votes, so, and represent roughly 17,000 people in our ward. So every vote can really make the difference in these local elections, and it's very important that you exercise that right. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Thank you. You might have noticed, if you've been looking at social media, there has been a sponsored advertisement for Strong Towns pushing out a community survey. I highly recommend that everybody go participate in that survey and let your opinion be known, because that is going to lay the groundwork on some really important initiatives going forward in terms of comprehensive planning, what we do with our, you know, responsible development, and how we treat the built environment going forward. So please go find that survey, participate in it, and if you have any questions, reach out. Thanks.
I have none. Consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate these routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any of the items proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, then that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that item one through item 25, excuse me, 24.
25.
25. Would that, okay. I can't read numbers. Uh, staff recommends that items five through 24 be placed on the consent docket. I need a motion to place items five through 24 on the consent docket.
So moved.
I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to place items five through 24 on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Five through 25 on the consent docket.
Got it.
24. 24. That's just a test.
We've been tested enough tonight.
Our votes passes unanimously.
Yay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent docket. Is there a second? Uh, I haven't heard the motion. Is there a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Councilmember?
Um, just want to make note, we had a brief discussion in our council conference before this about item number 20, which is a, moving around some funds to fill a gap in funding our emergency operations center. So as it stands tonight, they're moving some money from different buckets that we had allocated for ARPA money, and if we don't approve this today, we would have to go out to rebid, which would cost us considerable amount of money. But I had taken kind of objection to moving some of the money that we had allocated for affordable housing in our ARPA dollars into filling that budget gap. So I just want to make note that it was told to us earlier that we can approve this tonight and then come back and amend the source of funding for that, and so that is something that I'll be bringing forward and hopefully we'll see in the next meeting. So just wanted to clarify why this is still here and why we are approving it, is so that we do not have to rebid this project in the future.
So noted. Other comments? All right. Um, I'll entertain a motion to, excuse me. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you can cast your votes, may cast your votes, sorry.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item, ordinance 0222321, upon second and final reading, rezoning property located at 10001 Etowah Road, from A2 Rural Agricultural District to PUD Plan Unit Development District. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Is there, yes, there is. Applicant to make a presentation, Gunner.
Yes, Mayor. Good evening. Gunner Joyce with Reeger Law Group, and I will be brief, because I understand it's a pretty exciting, eventful night, so feel free to bring me back and ask questions. But we are at the south boundary here of Norman city limits, Etowah Road, and there is just, we are just to the east of 96th Avenue Southeast. Here's an aerial of the 40-acre track overhead. Here's an existing zoning map, and you can see we are heavily in agricultural zoning. That green color that's basically throughout is A2, which is the current zoning of this site as well, and what we are requesting, which is one change to A2, it is solely to add commercial dirt mining. Mining is actually not a use that is enumerated within the zoning code, so we are changing A2 to solely add that one use, no change to any of the other ordinances that would apply. And actually, as you guys are all aware, since this is a PUD, this is substantially restricting the property owners' allowable uses, because they do not show any buildings on that site, and as you know, that is the site plan right there that goes forward, so if they come back to add buildings or uses, they have a site...
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item, ordinance 0222321, upon second and final reading, rezoning property located at 10001 Etowah Road from A2 Rural Agricultural District to PUD Plan Unit Development District. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading. Motion to adopt. I have a motion and second. Is there, yes, there is. Applicant to make a presentation, Gunner.
Yes, Mayor. Good evening. Gunner Joyce with Reeger Law Group. And I will be brief, because I understand it's a pretty exciting, eventful night, so feel free to bring me back and ask questions. But we are at the south boundary here of Norman city limits, Etowah Road, and there is just, we are just to the east of 96th Avenue Southeast. Here's an aerial of the 40-acre track overhead. Here's an existing zoning map, and you can see we are heavily in agricultural zoning. That green color that's basically throughout is A2, which is the current zoning of this site as well. And what we are requesting, PUD, which is one change to A2, it is solely to add commercial dirt mining. Mining is actually not a use that is enumerated within the zoning code. So we are changing A2 to solely add that one use, no change to any of the other ordinances that would apply. And actually, as you guys are all aware, since this is a PUD, this is substantially restricting the property owners' allowable uses, because they do not show any buildings on that site. And as you know, that is the site plan right there that goes forward. So if they come back to add buildings or uses, they have a site plan amendment, with the one very small exception of a single-family residential house. You can't add a house under the city's PUD ordinance if it's not shown on the site plan. But any other uses, like these uses that are allowed under A2, raising of farm animals, like a barn, country club, golf course, medical marijuana, commercial grower, and education facility, all those that are allowed by a matter of right today on this property, could not be done without coming back to you all for a site plan amendment. So this substantially reduces the allowable uses on the site. I'll move pretty quick. We've limited hours of operation from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. That's not required anywhere else under A2, so that's another concession that's been made. No buildings are proposed. This is also going to improve to current city standards, the entrance to the property, which is not required currently. So they're going to do that as part of this request for approval. And it's a temporary use. The owner desires after the mining, surface mining is done, to turn this area into a farm pond for cattle that he runs currently on the site and to the 40 acres to the east. There's precedent of this in Norman. As you can see, here's the location on Franklin Road and 48th Avenue, where we had dirt mining activities and then became a pond. That is the ultimate goal here as well, to utilize that. This area has already received a permit from the Department of Mines. The mining permit for this site is five acres, shown in purple down here. So important to note that it does not encroach into the heavily wooded portion of the site. That'll remain unchanged. There's only five acres permitted for the use here. And there's a substantial buffer off of the right-of-way. 62 and 1/2 feet is required through the permit. So this will remain unchanged from the dirt mining activities, and really, it's just going to occur right here in that area. So conclusion, temporary use. The staff report notes that there's no change to the existing uses of the site, with the exception of the commercial dirt mining activities. We believe that's a pretty close call to A2 anyway, but since mining is not in the zoning ordinance we're coming to you tonight, the existing drive will be brought up to city standards. And as the staff report notes, there is proper site distance to allow for safe ingress and egress to and from the site. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item, vote of eight to one. And with that, happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. About the PUD uses, in our information, it does show quite a long list of allowed uses. But you're saying that they wouldn't actually be able to do any of these, because they don't show buildings for them or structures for them on the site, and that they would have to come back to council to get approval to do any of these, even though they are included? Is that the way I understand that?
So probably a little more technical answer is, all of that entire list, except commercial dirt mining, is the A2 ordinance. So we have not slid anything in that isn't allowable today. In effect, that's correct, probably with the one addition of single-family house, because the PUD does say a site plan, the PUD ordinance says you don't have to show single-family houses on a site plan, so they could come back and live there without coming back to you. Any of those other uses, they have to come to you with a site plan amendment, where, again, we'll probably talk about where those buildings go, what that looks like. And also, notably, we did not have to come forward with a preliminary plat with this request, because we are not showing any buildings. If we do show buildings, I imagine Ken Daner is going to tell me we now have to plat the property, which it currently is not platted. That's how we got, that's how we didn't have to have a preliminary plat with this PUD the first time, was no buildings were shown. So any of those other allowable uses are going to have a lot of different areas that are going to be reviewed at a lot of levels, at staff level, and then finally you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Beakon?
Thank you. Could you just speak briefly to kind of how you guys are going to use vehicles on the site, specifically, I assume, large dump trucks for hauling dirt and then excavators to pull it? Are those going to be stored on the site in perpetuity, or are they come and go? How does that work?
So my understanding is they're come and go. I don't think that's been really addressed yet. Basically, the owner of the property owns heavy trucks in the other business that they operate, and so I believe they use those trucks as kind of a side business here. So it's my understanding, those trucks are going to be used elsewhere during the week through their regular business.
Okay.
Also, just to note that we haven't requested any variances from any of the city ordinances. So all, everything that would govern use of this property and the neighboring properties with traffic and vehicular access fully applies here as well.
Okay. And I don't know what the city ordinance says about this, but I'm more curious about what the mining permit says. Are you required to secure the site or provide any kind of fencing around the open pit? Or how do we keep this thing safe?
So the mining permit talks about how the site is already fenced, and then there's a silt fence mentioned in the mining permit that says if there's any danger or evidence of erosion that's occurring, that they'll basically have silt fencing.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Torcarella?
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. The other question he answered, he asked the first one, but the environmental studies, there was a question about that. Was there a study done and was one required?
None was done and none was required, given that it's dirt mining. That's actually a pretty extensive portion of the mining application. And there's, I'll read some of the questions about, will this involve crushing of air contamination emissions? Are we using explosions, explosives in our operations? Are we discharging water from the mine or the plant? And then there's a note in the application that jurisdictional requirements of ODEQ, Oklahoma Water Resource Board, and the Army Corps of Engineers are all kind of playing a hand in this application process. So none was conducted on the site, but none of those required it in this case due to dirt mining and surface mining.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Grant?
I had a similar question about environmental impact. So what is it like if it rains and stands around for a while, or if the wind picks up and blows it to other neighbors?
So that's going to be governed by really just standard nuisance law that's applicable across the city, across the whole state, really. If we cause, or if the property owner causes any direct effects, whether through dust or runoff water, there's a civil action that affected neighbors could bring. And then we also have not opted out or sought any variances from the stormwater ordinances in the city and, you know, the drainage requirements. So all that is still going to be governed the same.
What's the duration of this mining?
Currently, I don't think there is an enumerated cap. I think there is, and let's see if I can find it quickly. I believe they have to reapply for the permit at a certain date, but I don't have that offhand.
That's it for me.
Councilmember Shuler?
Yes. I had some similar questions to some of the other council members, but in regard to, I guess, the activity and hours of operation, is there a reason why it goes until 8:00 PM in the evening?
The property owner thought that was an appropriate time. I know that, given different seasons of the year, that looks a lot different. And then, you know, the summer hours, there's still a lot of daylight where 8:00 PM and even 9:00 PM sometimes later, operations could occur. So they felt like that was a good concession, given that under the A2 zoning, there is no cap. And so why, in the winter, that might look probably more than needed. In the summer times and other months, there's certainly a lot of daylight still left.
Okay. And so in regard to the, you know, A2 allowable uses that Councilmember Holman was asking about, if you would have to come back to council anyway, why are they in the PUD in the first place? Like, they're not allowable. So why are they listed within the document?
So they're allowable today on that site, and so all we have done is just made one minor change to the current zoning.
Right. But I think in the spirit of what the applicant is trying to do is get a request for dirt mining, and so this is essentially creating your own zoning opportunity. So I would say that the A2 allowable uses are not necessarily applicable, especially if you're tailoring down to one allowable use and allowing maybe a single-family residential dwelling. I would say that this is my frustration with lots of PUDs and SPUDs, is that we aren't actually tailoring them down to what the intent of the property usage is supposed to be. So my concern with this, in this particular case, is, yes, they're not allowable today, but, you know, what's to say that we pass it with this, and then they come back? And, you know, I think it'd be harder to challenge a future council and saying, no, we don't want to allow these things, because they are currently listed in something that we have passed.
Candidly, that is our intent, because on all other properties in this adjacent area, if we came back with farm animal use, it is allowed today. And so that is our goal, that the property owner doesn't have to lose what they have the right today. So it's not that we're adding like commercial use as something that would tie your hands. We are keeping the exact spirit and intent of what exists today. So that would be our response back, is that, you know, we didn't feel it was appropriate to limit what's allowable today as a matter of right, other than in the ways that we have already done so, by not showing buildings and by limiting hours of operation. That would be our intent there.
Okay. Let's see. So in regards to the mining permit that you spoke about earlier and the different mechanisms for fencing and silt fencing and things like that, who is responsible for enforcing violations to that mining permit?
There's quite a few state agencies that all have enforcement rights there.
Does the city have enforcement rights to that?
I'm not sure on what the city's permit ability is on this, but it's very possible.
Can we get an answer to that?
Yeah, quick question for Mr. O'Leary's team. In terms of the permit, Scott, are you familiar with this particular process? Because we enforce stormwater issues regularly, and those come with permits issued by the DEQ. So please share what you know about mining permits.
Certainly. Scott's a city engineer, and I haven't looked into this one directly. Typically, anything over one acre would require a stormwater permit from the DEQ. However, I'm not certain how, because there's a permit through the mining, Department of Mining, how that affects it. And I would actually have to take a little more time to look into that, to give you a definitive answer on that. But I think that, and then that may trump our earth change permit also, but I would have to make some research into that to give you a definite answer.
Scott, but isn't that permit at over an acre, isn't that an MPDES permit where they're pumping out of that pit, which they wouldn't be doing in this case?
Well, this would be earth disturbance. Anytime you disturb more than an acre, and so it's a disturbed earth, that requires the permit. And that's what would be, but because this has a mining permit, like agriculture, we don't, we can't issue permits on agricultural. And I'm just not certain what the exact stipulations, regulations are with the relationship to the mining permit itself. And I didn't research that prior to coming here tonight.
Thank you, sir.
So I had some other questions about your answer to the question about environmental kind of impact. So I know that there have been residents not too far away from this considerably impacted by dirt and dust movement. I'm thinking about in the Cedar Lane addition, where there is ongoing development, and there was, you know, massive dust clouds, and it was clogging air conditioners. I realize that this is not maybe the same thing, but just thinking about impacts to that, as well as enforcement kind of mechanisms to if there's being, you know, other property owners are being impacted by that. So can you maybe address it just a little bit further?
Yeah, I think the simplest way really is a civil action against the, really, it would be the mining operation of the property owner. We've certainly made them aware of the potential of that, and so why it's important for basically what is essentially temporary stabilization efforts. But what really is the ultimate kind of enforcement body there is a civil nuisance claim. And so should dust particles encroach on other persons' properties from this, there is a civil action that can be brought.
Yeah. So are there any other, like, I guess, mechanism, like, you know, spraying down the dirt? Like, are those things going to be taken into account while, you know, this is in operation?
That's certainly something we've advised the property owner of, because at the end of the day, you know, our client, we want to make sure that they stay out of any kind of nuisance claims, and so we've made them aware of that, certainly.
Thank you.
I couldn't hear you. Oh. Councilmember Grant?
Yes. Back to that environmental impact study. So you said that they weren't required to have one. What would require them to have one?
So I apologize. I'm just going to kind of answer some of these questions here that are on the permit application, because I'm not familiar with the mining requirements that would trigger those. But the questions that are asked are whether our activities are going to involve the crushing of air contaminant emissions and the use of explosives, whether we're going to involve washing the mined materials in a recycled process that is going to discharge off-site. And when we don't have those operations, the environmental tests aren't required. So if we were doing different type of mining, maybe like coal mining or mining for more minerals that are not just surface dirt mining, I believe that's what triggers those studies.
What kind of protest have you all heard about this one?
No formally filed protests. We've had neighbors be involved throughout the process, but no protests. And that is what really has changed the application throughout the process. Originally, it was not filed with any hours of operation. And then we have continued to really flush out the details of the mining permit that really restrict and kind of regulate the activities on the site. And then as well as, as we've already talked about, the concessions that are made here through a PUD without showing future development plans.
Does this include the woman from the Planning Commission?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, she was there and spoke.
So you guys spoke to her after that meeting?
We did not, no.
Okay. Well, she didn't seem very happy at the end of it, so, thank you.
Councilmember Torcarella?
You answered my question. I think I'm satisfied so far, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, lots of questions. I, I think there were some questions about elevation and drainage and kind of stormwater asked at Planning Commission, and maybe you might address, or I don't see anybody from, maybe, with storm, related to stormwater, just wondering, you know, what the impacts are going to be as you dig and, you know, mine off dirt.
So really, when we talk about stormwater in the city, the really concern there is when we are adding impervious surface to the area, and here, we are not doing that at all. So even the full mine is going to be pervious. So really, the threat of adding impervious and having stormwater runoff concerns is really non-existent here, in our opinion, especially with, you know, when you talk about impervious coverage maximums, when we come with developments, we usually try and stay around the requirements for the zoning categories. For an example, the R1 allowance is 65%, which then, you know, allows for that 35% of, you know, impervious and 65% of basically concrete and 35% of pervious area. Here, as you see on site, you know, we're almost 100% of pervious. And so we really think that stormwater is not going to be an issue. But given that answer, again, we still are fully under all of the city ordinance and regulations.
So I think there were also some questions about creating a pond on the site right after the dirt has been removed. Can you talk a little bit more about how, what's happening on the adjacent property? Because I know there was talk about livestock and some different things that are being utilized, and that it's being used with multiple property owners, right? Is that correct?
That is correct. So this might be the best way to show it here. The highlighted property is the 40 acres that has the request for the dirt mine. To the east here, and the adjacent property, is basically coal To the east here and the adjacent property is basically co-leased with the owner of this one and the owner of the eastern portion, and together they run cattle. And so the ultimate plan here is after the surface dirt mining is over because with the limitation on the area of the property that will be mined, eventually it'll no longer be an area where there'll be commercial viability. And so at that stage, it'll become, turned into a pond where the cattle that they run on site can utilize.
Okay. And you might have addressed this, and I'm trying to remember back to Planning Commission, but was there a requirement to update the, I guess, driveway onto the site?
There is, yes. So the current access point will be brought up to current city standards.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, or is anybody from the public signed up to speak on this?
We do have one speaker, Brian Hill. Okay, Evan, I have you as well. I guess Mr. Hill's not here.
I don't support this. This is the opposite of permaculture, and that's what we shouldn't be incentivizing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
That is all. Our votes have been cast and the motion passes by a vote of five to two, voting against Councilmember Grant, Councilmember Schuler.
Thank you, ma'am.
No, six to two, I'm sorry. Six to two, voting against Councilmember Grant, Councilmember Schuler.
To reject the ordinance on final reading.
Second.
Is that to adopt or reject?
Adopt.
Adopt, okay. I just want to make sure. I've got a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on the final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
John, I don't have you signed up for that item. Have you signed up for miscellaneous? Not according to what you signed. Wait a minute. Can you all vote again because I didn't have a vote for Matt?
Council, please recast your vote.
Motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes by a vote of six to two, voting against Councilmember Schuler, Councilmember Grant.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 26 is a recodification ordinance, but it was printed on the agenda as a first reading in error. The first reading accord occurred on January 24th, 2023. Therefore, staff is requesting that the item be postponed to February 28th to correct the notice for the second reading. I'll entertain a motion to postpone the ordinance to February 28th.
Motion to postpone.
Have a motion and second. Are there any comments from council regarding the postponement? Hearing none. This is an opportunity for members regarding the postponement. Are there any public comments?
They wouldn't have been able to sign up for this, so we'll just take them from the floor regarding postponement.
Okay. Hearing none. Are there any final comments from council? No? Okay. Motion on the floor is to postpone the ordinance to February 28th. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The motion to postpone the ordinance until February 28th passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 27 has been withdrawn by the applicant. That's all we have. Miscellaneous comments. Who do we have signed up?
We start tonight with Stephen Ellis.
This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Mr. Ellis?
Stephen Ellis, Ward four. I want to draw your attention to something that was happening in the city legal department that I just ran across. The short version, basically, is that there's at least one lawyer for the city of Norman who is claiming because that Norman as a whole entity has obligations or the sole obligation under the Oklahoma Open Records Act, then there's no individual, not even the keepers of Norman's various departments, who are required to do anything to meet open records obligation. So they're basically saying no municipality in the state is subject to open records act requests because of a federal court ruling. So here's the more full story, which is what I've learned. So I've been trying to get some Norman Police Department documents, body camera footage in a manner that's consistent with Oklahoma Open Records Act. And I got a reply from the attorney at the city legal, who works with the police, who said, and this is a quote, "For clarification, neither Ms. Shackle, who is Police Department's record person, nor any of the city's employees has a legal obligation to produce records under the ORA. See Primus versus City of Oklahoma, which is a 10th Circuit court case, that concluded a municipal employee had no duty to produce any documents under the ORA because law enforcement agencies, not individual officers, are required to produce records." And if you want to see that whole exchange, drop me a line at my OU email address and I'll send it to you. So city legal is clearly interpreting the phrase "a municipal employee has no duty" as meaning no municipal employee had a duty, rather than meaning there exists a municipal employee, a particular one, who had no duty. And I ask you to look at the Primus case. It's pretty clearly the latter one. I just want to say, I think it's troubling that the city of Norman's legal department is willing to argue that the whole ORA is effectively unenforceable. And my suspicion is that they're just trying to put me off for something, but I don't think that makes it any better, right? I think that is just an attempt to circumvent the timeliness requirement for the ORA. So I hope you'll have a chance to look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Paul Wilson?
How about this weather? Paul Wilson, Ward one. I kind of got a little upset two weeks ago when council approved rezoning of the plot of land near the OU motel. There was a statement by the representative that made it, that said there was no protests and that there was no neighbors or anything at the pre-planning. Well, I'm an Uber driver. I picked up somebody the exact next day from the OU motel. They knew nothing about it. To this day, the only way they're getting any information is through the news. I find it kind of funny that none of the residents at the hotel, which is their home, knew anything about this prior to me telling them. I don't know about you, but there's about 100 people that live there, and that's their home. When that thing is demolished, they have no place to go. Out of the 100 people that live there, 20 of them are children. We have a homeless problem in the city of Norman already. Do we really want to put another 100 people out on the street? I, there is somebody here from the OU motel, and I also know there's also, they don't even know when it's going to happen. It could be this week, it could be next week, it could be six months from now. I really encourage the council to revisit that part of the agenda from two weeks ago because I don't know about you, but if I was told that there were no protests and no comments from the people around that area, and then found out that those people didn't even know anything about it, I don't know about you, but I'd be upset, especially when there's children involved. So I know the person that's here is going to say some more, so I'm just going to leave it at that. I can't believe that these people would do this to the, just for 650 beds for the University of OU. I'm sure the developers probably talked to the retail establishments near there, and of course, those people are going to have zero issues with it. 650 new potential clients are people that come in and buy stuff. Yeah, I'd be happy to, but not at the expense of 100 people, 20 of which are kids. Thank you.
My name is Crimson King. I'm very well-known. My family does live there. I'm a mom. That's my husband. I have a sister that works there that also had no idea. Not only are y'all taking people's jobs, you're taking my family away from me. That was my last resort. Do you understand? I have nowhere else to go with my children. The shelter stuck me there. I was told by the internet that this was happening. We packed what little we have. We sleep. I'm scared to go to work because I don't want to have to take what little I have or my children. They won't, the state will take my kids from me. Do you understand? I've lived this long to be a mom. I've took in on multiple kids. I'm a mom of nine. The state places kids with me. I was just stuck in a bad situation. Don't take my home from me. Don't take my children from me. Don't take my sister's job. Don't take that stuff away from us. It's not fair. We don't deserve it. I've been worried sick. My kids are stressing. We cry every night because I don't know when the next, if I'm going to not see my kids the next day when I send them off to school. That's a problem for me as a mom. I just want you to know there are children there. There are families there. We don't get, we don't go outside. We don't, but that place is bad. That's why people don't know we're there, because we hide. Don't take my family away from me, please.
You have to flip it on there.
Okay, can you hear me now?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. You know, that's hard to stand up to. Maybe y'all might want to do something for those people to evacuate them to a place where they can be safe when you move that, you know, out. Maybe there's something they can do with the homeless. Funny that you're taking away from the homeless and giving it that direction. Take care of the people that are nearly due. They are on their last leg. That place where the shelters would stick a lot of people, they have no other place to go. And I'm surprised that they don't know about a situation. Aren't they supposed to put something up on the wall of a location where they're doing stuff like this? Or they don't have to do this? They can just hide behind doors and do, you know, behind their backs. But that's not what I'm talking about today. But I just wanted to take, take a place on that. And when I sign up, I sign up for everything, just so you'll know, okay? Because the reason why I do that is because we only have three minutes to talk, and you don't know what you want to talk about most of the time until the city council talks. So I sign up for everything, always. But, you know, so I make sure that if I want to talk, I can talk. There's something wrong with this little system we got here because if you want to talk, you won't be able to talk if you don't sign up. And you may not need, know that you need to sign something. Or you hear something like that, you know? That tells you that maybe the people that are telling you things are not always telling the truth. And when you have 100 people in a location that doesn't, none of them know where, about it, there's something not being said right, or they're not doing procedures right to make sure everybody's notified of the situation. I thought you're supposed to notify everybody when you're doing something like that. It's always, there, yes, say, some of them are uneducated, but you're supposed to work around that and try to make it where sure these people know. Are we going to have another 100 people out on the street? That's all we need, you know? Already we lost a couple of the housing projects that were for the homeless. Already lost, you know, a lot of that. Why do we need to do this again until we make sure we find another project that can help these people and give them a place to home? That mother's scared to death. Don't you think that's reserving to her kids every day when she's stressing out? Kid's going to have a hard time to learn and make it in this world when they're stressing about wondering whether, know where they're going to have a bed to sleep. So maybe we might want to work on something to take care of that problem there now that we know about it and it's presented to you. But, you know, again, I always want to point out, come on, people, watch out for crosswalks. You know, when you pull, when you pull in front of me, I'm going to start carrying a hammer with me.
Ward seven, 1400 Garfield Avenue. I want to second everything that John said. This system could be so much better. For citizens who not only want to speak at the time an issue comes up and they don't know if they want to until after you all speak, that seems to be an easy fix. Giving people more time to speak, I think, is something that is also an easy fix. What if we had some type of an application process and somebody who wants to make a presentation about relevant topics or about just general well-being, they submitted a proposal, it was reviewed, and then that individual was granted five minutes to give their presentation? I don't know, something. But it's causing some ripples within the community, and I think we need to reconcile that. What's in the box? Well, remember last week, I talked about the Wim Hof system? And there's another book that's come out, and it's called Breath. So I bought, everyone, or you thrones bought, everyone a copy of Breath. Why? Because Breath is the most foundational element to the human experience. Perfecting your breath is something that we should be doing at every strata of society, across all religions, across all races, across all economic brackets. It's something that can make us all 1%, 2% more efficient, 2% healthier. How? By perfecting your circulation. If you're pushing fluid, if you're pushing oxygen to all of your cells like we know is happening, think of your body as a balloon, something, trillions and trillions of balloons that are expanding. And as they're discarding those broken-down cells and the carbon dioxide, that's your body breathing. Balancing the force of gravity, which is relentless, is absolutely. Balancing the force of gravity, which is relentless, is absolutely integral to extending our longevity for as long as possible, as well as our health. Being vital, being a dynamic, healthy individual, is what enables you to synthesize complex problems and achieve results that are best for all species, for all generations. And that's precisely what the Uthrones do, is perfecting the internal self. Permaculture is perfecting the outer self. If you have any questions, and I open this up to anyone watching, email me. You can call me.
Guess what? We are adjourned.